Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Special Planning, Building, and Zoning Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Chairperson Stanton.
President.
Vice Chair Annette.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McCleod.
Present.
Thank you. We have new business tonight, and as first is 1A and a 1B. Request approval for: A) An intergovernmental agreement between the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, CMAP, and the Village of Hoffman Estates to accept planning staff assistance services delivered by CMAP for planning for the 2020 to 2024 Assessment of Fair Housing, AFH; B) An intergovernmental memorandum of understanding to collaborate in the Chicago Cook County Assessment of Fair Housing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do you want to tell us what's going on with this?
Yes, Trustee Stanton. This is a program that is going to supersede the existing assessment that we had already been doing for CDBG, and that is the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing that was called AI that we've done in the past. Now, the new rule that came into being in 2015 is the Assessment of Fair Housing, and this assessment must be done before we submit our next consolidated plan. That's the five-year plan. And it's being put together with 20 other entities, and CMAP will be working together to coordinate it. And so it's actually a cost savings to us at the Village, and it'll be a little bit faster as well, hopefully.
I have one question, probably more of it than I'm going to ask, and that's: What happens if CMAP decides not to do this after all?
Then the Village would still have to produce its own AFH, its own assessment, and submit that to HUD and gain approval before it could submit its next five-year consolidated plan in 2020.
Is there any reason that we can believe that CMAP would not do this?
No, not at this time. There are no indications in that way.
Okay. Anybody else with any other questions here?
Is this part of the community block grant?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Okay, so every town that gets community block grant money has to do this?
That is correct. And in this group, this is mainly the Chicago Cook County group that is represented here.
Barrington Hills is represented in this, too?
No.
South Barrington, Inverness.
Only entitlement communities that are entitled to get CDBG.
Correct.
Would be in this. So you're Arlington Heights, over 50,000 population.
So the real towns have to do this. Oh.
Yeah, I agree with that, absolutely.
That's why there's only 21. Trustee Palafas.
Just a quick question about the new AFH requires an assessment of the following: Patterns of integration segmentation. A lot of these are data-intensive. Where do you get that? Or is that going to be supplied by the feds?
That is the benefit of using CMAP, is that they'll be able to gather that information, and they're doing a lot of that already with their current comprehensive plans like the ONDA 2040 and ONDA 2050, I think those are what they're called. So they're already gathering this information, so it's a nice thing that we can actually use that information that they're already gathering at this time.
So it'll come from the federal sources that you'll be working with?
CMAP takes it not only from the census data, but they also have other sources, private sources?
Right. I'm just curious, because we kind of ran across this when Monica and Jennifer and I were working on the mayoral challenge, and Representative Musmane had some of it. But when I saw four of these, I'm like, man, those would have been great to have. So I'm like, where are those coming from? Because, you know, it's piecemeal. There's not one repository that has it all. So I was just curious.
This is true. So they'll be working with the other civic organizations as well, so the different housing agencies and getting input from different locations. And a lot of the data will also come through different meetings, so they'll have surveys that will go out, and then they'll also host a series of meetings that the Village would otherwise have to host on its own. So that's another benefit of using CMAP, that they'll be able to do regional meetings in different locations and gather the information. And it is a regional, more of a regional effort than the Analysis of Impediments, the AI, had been in the past. So no matter what, the Village would have to look at information outside of the Village and assess how that's impacting fair housing, say, within the Village. And so CMAP's able to actually just take the information that they're already gathering and put that together for us.
And you'll be our representative that's doing this work?
I will be.
From the Village?
Okay. Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, curious factor, you're talking about a regional approach, so do the towns that don't get community block grant money, they don't have to worry about fair housing? But do they get credits for fair housing because we have fair housing and Arlington Heights have fair housing? So it's regionally we have fair housing? I'm just curious how this works.
Mr. Norris, you have your hand up.
Really, I know where I think you're going, Mayor. Under the CDBG, this is just a requirement for those that are entitlement. They aren't really worried about those that are non-entitlement. When you get to the state of Illinois, fair housing, remember, we had to go through that several years ago, then what you're talking about actually does happen, where it is done regionally, and a Kenilworth, for example, could get credit for a Hoffman Estates that has lower-priced housing than that they don't. But for the CDBG, for this analysis, they look at the region as a whole, but they're really only commenting on the communities that are entitlement, the way I understand it.
It's true. And the other areas that are not entitlement communities, and we have some right around us, they might not be necessarily CDBG entitlement communities, but they still have grant funding going to them, probably through the county. They'll get it through Cook County. So Cook County will still have their own assessment that they'll be doing as part of this, and so they'll then have to look at those things, too, how to remedy fair housing issues in those communities that aren't direct.
When you get the copies of the Barrington Hills and the Invernesses, the South Barrington's fair housing policies, I definitely want to copy them.
I'll share it. Absolutely.
Trustee Mills.
Ryan, the last time we did this, did we do it in-house?
We did.
And do we have any kind of comparison of how much less money this will cost us to do it this way?
I couldn't find an exact breakout, but I know that in 2013, we had hired a consultant to help us with that, which is fairly typical. And I know that that year, we had paid something about $4,800.
Okay.
And most of that work was probably towards that assessment at that time.
Now, will there be expenses over and above the $1,000 that we have to contribute?
I do believe that there will be some minor expenses. For example, if we have to host one of the, you know, one of the meetings, maybe that, you know, we'll have to have some coffee and such, but also maybe it would be good to, correct, put it in the citizen and, you know, in some other places like that, then.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing significant is staff time, which we'd have if we did ourselves.
Yeah, we would have had either way, yeah.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with any other questions up here? Okay.
Mayor, still my question.
Good. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and we are adjourned.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the first meeting of the month of November. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Annette.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McCleod.
Present. Trustee Annette, releasing the pledge. Everybody please rise.
Please, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Annette. Move on to item number three, recognition of the audience. This is the time if someone has a question or concern for the Village Board or the Village Staff for an item that's not on the agenda, now's the time to come forward. One, twice, three times, we'll move on. Chair, accept a motion to approve the minutes of the October 16th, 2017 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any questions or concerns on the minutes? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. Five, consent agenda. Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
A second.
There's a motion, a second, for the consent agenda. This consists of five: A) Approval of the agenda; B) Approval of the scheduled bills for November 6, 2017, in the amount of $2,249,877.24; C) Request board approval of the 2017-2018 snow ice control policy and procedure manual; D) Request board authorization to your new contract for 2017-2018 sanitary sewer work that includes cleaning, root cutting, televised inspection, and evaluation services with American Underground Inc., Glenview, Illinois, lowest qualified bid, in an amount not to exceed $150,000. There's a motion, a second, any questions? Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Annette.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye, motion carried. Move on to six, President's Report. I believe we have some proclamations, Madam Clerk.
Yes, I have the first one. Office of the Mayor proclamation: Whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community; and whereas the police department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community; and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks makes a profile of this dedicated employee; and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates on behalf of its citizens desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 25 years of dedicated proficiency in the aforementioned department, be it therefore resolved that William D. McCleod, acting under by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of the Village of Hoffman Estates hereby proclaim Tuesday, November 9, 2017, Olivero Fernandez Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them in outstanding service.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
A second.
Motion, a second, we appreciate the great job that L has done for us for 25 years. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. Chief, you want to give this to L with our thanks?
Thursday, November 9.
I have the next proclamation. Whereas Alzheimer's is the most common form of dementia, a general term for memory loss and other cognitive abilities serious enough to interfere with daily life, Alzheimer's disease accounts for 60% to 80% of dementia cases; and whereas Alzheimer's is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States, it is a progressive disease, where dementia symptoms generally worsen over a number of years. In its early stages, memory loss is mild, but with late-stage Alzheimer's, individuals lose the ability to carry on a conversation and respond to their environment. And whereas of the estimated 3-point, or I'm sorry, 5.5 million Americans living with Alzheimer's dementia in 2017, an estimated 5.3 million are age 65 and older, and approximately 200,000 individuals are under age 65 and have younger onset Alzheimer's. And whereas total payments in 2017 for all individuals with Alzheimer's or other dementias are estimated at $259 billion, Medicare and Medicaid are expected to cover $175 billion, or 67%, of the total health care and long-term care payments for people with Alzheimer's or other dementias. Out-of-pocket spending is expected to be $56 billion. And whereas one promising line of research suggests that strategies for overall healthy aging may help keep the brain healthy and may even reduce the risk of developing Alzheimer's, these measures include eating a healthy diet, staying socially active, avoiding tobacco and excess alcohol, and exercising both the body and mind, be it therefore a resolve that William D. McCleod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaims November 2017 as National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urges all Hoffman Estates residents and businesses to join in its observance.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. We certainly hope the research will continue, and this scourge will be lifted from the human race in the near future. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. Dr. Seviedra?
Thank you for all your department does. Who's next?
Alrighty, I have the next one. Office of the Mayor proclamation: Whereas each year, the United States generates more than 258 million tons of municipal solid waste. According to the Environmental Protection Agency, our nation has reached an overall recycling rate of 34.6%. And whereas each year, our national recycling rate sends 89 million tons of material to a useful second life instead of the landfill, saves the same amount of energy consumed by over 10 million U.S. households in a year, and avoids greenhouse gas emissions equivalent to removing more than 38 million cars. And whereas to focus on the nation's attention on the importance of recycling, businesses, industries, government agencies, nonprofit organizations, and individuals have joined together to celebrate America Recycles Day, and are encouraging their friends, neighbors, and coworkers to pledge to learn more about recycling options in their community and commit to recycle more materials. And whereas participating in America Recycles Day 2017 is one way, citizens can help raise awareness about the need to reduce waste by reusing, recycling, and buying recycled content products. And whereas although there has been a significant increase in the amount of recycling in Hoffman Estates, Illinois, to date, we must also continue to focus on other initiatives such as waste reduction, composting, the reuse of products and materials, and purchasing recycled products. Be it therefore resolved that William D. McCleod, acting under and by the virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Wednesday, November 15, 2017, America Recycles Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all Hoffman Estates residents and businesses to join in its observance.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. I'm very proud of what the Village has done in the sustainability market in the last decade or so, thanks to a couple of the people sitting up here with me, and all the rest of us who joined them in that, but they really led the charge. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. Suzanne Ostrowski, who is our sustainability guru, do you accept this?
Thank you.
Office of the Mayor proclamation: Whereas the United Nations Universal Children's Day was established in 1954 and is celebrated on November 20th each year to promote international togetherness, awareness among children worldwide, and improving children's welfare. And whereas Universal Children's Day offers us an inspirational entry point to advocate, promote, and celebrate children's rights, translating into dialogues and actions that will build a world fit for children. And whereas, childhood is a special time in our lives. It is a time when children, because of their vulnerability, need special consideration, care, nurturing, and protection to ensure they survive, thrive, and realize their full potential as productive members of society. And whereas children do not vote, but special attention should be given to their opinions in school or at home, and these should be represented in the community, media, and in government if we are to understand fully the impact of our policies on their lives. And whereas issues such as education and health care affect children directly, and in many cases permanently, comprehensive and far-sighted policy aids the development of children immeasurably. And whereas, as adults, we are ultimately responsible for the physical, emotional, and psychological well-being of our world's children. Their future success or not rests squarely on our shoulders. Therefore, it is critical that we strive to respect our children as the future generation, treat them with kindness, and give them opportunities to grow their skills in the areas of love, friendship, and fairness. Be it therefore resolved that William D. McCleod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Monday, November 20, 2017, as Universal Children's Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urges all residents and businesses of Hoffman Estates to join in its observance by telling a child how much you appreciate them and how special they are.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Particularly as you look around the world these days, Universal Children's Day is a very important event that we really need to take better care of the young people in this world. Is Erica Severino here? Come on up, Erica. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion. Do you want to talk about your organization and what you do a little bit first? Is that microphone on?
Yes, sir.
So I'm Shag.
Yeah, right there, yeah. We're televising this, so we got to be on the mic.
I'm the director at Bright Horizons at Hoffman Estates, so we were formerly known as Sears Child Development Center. We're right on the Sears campus, and it has a September 1st. We've actually been open to the community for over five years, but most people didn't know. So when they were reaching out looking for childcare, they thought we were only open to Sears employees. So we are open to the community, so we've been doing a lot with the Chamber and the Village, the Historical Society, to get our name out there. So we're half, about half-capacity. We have 16 classrooms, only 11 classrooms open. Since we've changed our name, just an example of how much we've grown all summer, we only had six infants enrolled, we're up to 18 infants.
Wow.
So that's just an example. We have, we care for children as early as six weeks, all the way up to five years. So our enrollment is growing with the name change, and we're just working at marketing our center right now.
Well, the organization's been there for over 25 years.
Yep, we just celebrated our 25-year anniversary.
Great.
So.
Okay, come on up. Shake hands with everybody.
Thank you.
It's a little warmer, that day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Got to get a picture, Erica, if you want to come right up here.
Everybody ready? Here we go. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job. Okay, do have a couple appointments. We have Robert Borishak for the Historical Sites Commission. Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
A second.
Motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. This evening, we interviewed Jean Carlson for the Disabled Citizens Commission. Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
A second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. Wednesday, the 25th, we had Wine Wednesday over at Moretti's. That was a sellout. That was quite a, quite a great event. The Arbor Counseling Center had their open house on Thursday, the 26th, and we had our French Evening at the Sears Center, which was very well-attended and a really, really good event. The 27th, we had the Halloween Luncheon for the Commission for Senior Citizens. They always do a very good job. And on the 28th, we had the Photography Workshop that the Arts Commission put on, and Cupcakes for a Cause at Hoffman Estates High School. And that evening, several of us were able to go to Father Rizzo's Last Mass at his reception at St. Hubert's. Trustees Gata and Stanton and Mills and I were all there. That was a very good event. He's done a great job for St. Hubert's and for the entire community of Hoffman Estates, so we really appreciate everything he did. On Saturday, the 4th, we had the Public Works Open House, which was fabulous event. Everybody with kids and grandkids immensely enjoyed it, though my hearing is finally coming back after, oh, the horns were tooted, but hey, that's just the fun of it, I guess. Okay, that's all I get. So we can move on to trustee comments, starting with trustee Gata this time.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, I know, he did catch me off-guard on that one. Let's see now, on Tuesday, October 17th, we, the Village here, the filming of Heart of Hoffman Estates with School District 54 Foundation. Then also on the 17th, attended the Capital Improvements Board Meeting. And also on the 17th, the Sister Cities Meeting. Then on Friday, the 27th, the Halloween Luncheon, as the mayor had indicated, for the commission, put on by the Commission of Senior Citizens, and they always do an outstanding job. It's a pleasure to work with them. Then, let's see, Saturday, October 28th, attended the Cupcakes for a Cause at the Hoffman Estates High School. What a great way to raise money. The only thing is that I bought 12 and put about two and a half to three pounds on my waist for it, but it was worth it. It was worth it. Also, on the 28th, attended the Father Rizzo Last Mass at St. Hubert's Parish, and yes, he's going to be missed. And of course, on Saturday, the Public Works Open House at 2305 Pembroke Avenue. What an impressive site, Joe, to see all those trucks lined up as you're pulling in, and every single one of them was clean for it. And yes, you guys do a great job. Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, trustee Annette.
On the 26th, I also attended the Sister Cities Taste of Paris. It was an awesome event and very well-attended by everybody. My congratulations to the Sister Cities Commission for putting on such a great event. The 28th, I also attended the Cupcake for a Cause. I did buy six, but didn't eat one of them. On the 4th, I also attended the Public Works Open House. Really great event, great attended. The pumpkin smash was awesome, and that was a really great job by everybody there, Joe. That's all I have.
Okay, trustee Mills.
Okay, several of the same things. The 17th of October, we had our Capital Improvements Board Meeting. On the 18th, I had Northwest Mosquito Abatement District Meeting. The 19th, we had the Intergovernmental Reception at Elk Grove Village Park District. Thank you for, thanks to them for a nice evening. 20th, I had the Chamber Celebration of Excellence Committee Meeting. It's that time of year where they'll be starting to put together the celebration for January. Should be a good event. 21st, we had coffee with the board right here in this room, with a good attendance, and quite a few questions went on that day. So it was an interesting day, and we followed that up with the Firehouse 21 Open House. And a great job by the fire department over there that day. The 25th, was Wine Wednesday at Moretti's, and as the mayor said, there was quite a crowd there that evening. On the 26th, we had the French Evening from Sister Cities, and thank you to that commission. And thank you to the seniors for the Halloween Luncheon on the 27th. 28th, we had Hoffman Estates High School Cupcakes for a Cause, and my husband enjoyed the cupcakes that I bought, so, especially the one that had Cubs on it. The 28th, as the mayor said, we all, several of us attended Mayor Rizzo's Last Official Mass as pastor.
Father Rizzo.
Father Rizzo, with the mayor. Well, he's kind of the mayor of St. Hubert's, yeah. Father Rizzo's Last Official Mass and his retirement reception, which followed, and they had fun kind of teasing him throughout that reception. I apologize, Joe, that I couldn't be at your Public Works Open House. I heard it was wonderful. And last but not least, I want to wish good luck to the Hoffman Estates High School Hawks football team as they go into their quarterfinals, which is a first for the school, and do great out there. Hope they can, they can win it.
Go Hawks, bring the state title.
Yeah.
Trustee Palafas.
I also echo the best wishes for the Hawks. You know, they're in 6A, but they play 7A teams all year and pounded, you know, oh, 8A, you're right. 7A, 8A, and pounded most of them, so they should be like, you know, playing way over their game now, which is great. Also, I attended the Public Works Open House. It's always great to see Brian in the bucket throwing pumpkins down. It's the highlight of any event. Should do that for more events and whatnot. The pumpkin smash was big. And, you know, I can only handle so much of the kids beeping. You know, they're in 6A, but they play 7A teams all, all year and pounded, you know, oh, 8A, you're right. 7, 8, 8, and pounded most of them, so they should be like, you know, playing way over their game now, which is great. Also, I attended the Public Works Open House. It's always great to see Brian in the bucket throwing pumpkins down. It's the highlight of any event. Should do that for more events and whatnot. The pumpkin smash was big. And, you know, I can only handle so much of the kids beeping the horns thing. You know, now the mine's 18, you know, it was fun, though. They have so much joy and smiles on their faces as they do it. Also, thanks, Joe, for all of the work you guys did. You jumped on a lot of the stuff that people brought up at the Coffee with the Board, especially Bordeaux and Versailles, which my, the kids that stand on that bus stop are very appreciative. I just wanted to bring up Cupcakes for a Cause. We attended that. I didn't eat the cupcakes. I have five teenagers who plowed through them pretty fast, though, and they liked them. A couple upcoming events this week. Thursday, we have Beer Brats in Beethoven, which is a great combination. They're all German in some way, so we're having that event out at the Sears Center. Please attend if you can. Also, the Veterans Day Ceremony is observed on Friday, so there's a bunch of stuff, you know, I'll be attending and whatnot. And then Saturday is the Village event out at the police station. So that's all for me.
Alrighty, thank you. Trustee Newell.
Okay, pretty much the same as everybody else. So on the 17th, we did the Capital Improvements Meeting. On the 19th, was the Intergovernmental Reception, which was a very nice reception given by Elk Grove. And the 21st, the Fire Station Open House, Fire Station Number 21, which was a great event out there. It was kind of neat to see them repelling off this bucket way up there in the sky. No, they didn't have pumpkins. See, now that, now, now wait a minute. See, now that would have been 100 feet throwing it, right? And you guys were only, what, 55? 50? 50 feet off your cherry picker?
Joe's going to want another piece of equipment if you keep talking this way.
Okay.
Get the ladder.
So much for that one. Okay. Coffee with the Board also on the 21st. 28th, Cupcakes for a Cause, which is awesome event. A lot of different types of cupcakes, and I kind of looked at them, and then they were gone. And then I missed Father Rizzo's farewell, but I wish him the best. I was out of town on that one. And on the 4th, of course, the Public Works Open House, and everybody really enjoyed the pumpkin smash, but the thing is, is that we truly take those and get them composted. So it was kind of a fun way to entice everybody to come, and hopefully next year we'll have more. Do we have any numbers about how many pumpkins we've had, or no?
I think we're really going to have about 30 to 40.
Okay.
But it's the first year, so.
Okay.
Once we're this out, hopefully.
We'll have more.
Yeah.
Well, it was fun, and it was a good job done by everyone, and I know the kids always have a great time. It was really a good event for, and very impressive when he said, you see all the trucks all the way down, you know, Pembroke over there and stuff, so that's all I have.
Okay, trustee Stanton.
Joe, I got a question before I go through my litany of things here. What do you do with the smashed pumpkins once they're all smashed? Yeah.
Come on up, Joe. So this is for the folks at home.
We actually did the program through Scare's, and we had to find a group. We'll take the dumpster full of pumpkins to a farm to compost them, so they'll all get composted. They will not end up in the landfill, which is typically where pumpkins usually, mine usually end up in the landfill. So it's a way to keep them out of the landfill and compost them and put it right back in the ground, so that's it.
Thank you for the information.
Yep.
Okay, going back to the 17th of October, the mayor, trustee Gata, and myself took part in the filming of the Heart of Hoffman Stage, which basically was a question-and-answer session with the School District 54 Foundation, staff, and board. And later that evening, I attended the Capital Improvements Board Meeting. On the 19th, I was able to attend the Intergovernmental Reception sponsored by Elk Grove Village. On the 21st of October, there was Coffee with the Board. On the 24th, I was able to stop by for the Higgins Education Center's trunk retreat event. And then on the 26th, I was able to attend with my wife the Sister Cities French Evening at the Sears Center, and I want to thank the committee for that. It was a wonderful event. On the 27th, I was able to attend the Senior Citizens Halloween Luncheon sponsored by the Commission for Senior Citizens, which they did an excellent job again, as they always do. And on the 28th, I was able to attend Father Rizzo's Last Mass and Reception. On the 2nd, the mayor, Village Manager Jim Norris, Mark Copeland, and myself had a short meeting with Anthony Iatrola regarding Plum Farms. And on the 4th, I was able to attend the Public Works Open House, and that's it. Thank you, trustee Stanton. Move on to Village Manager's Report.
Nothing to add tonight, sir.
6D, Village Clerk's Report.
I do. During the month of October, 174 FOIAs went through the doors here, and 28 passports were processed.
How do we shape up with FOIAs with surrounding communities? We seem to be an awful lot of them.
We have a lot. Yeah, when some of the clerks, when you get together, FOIA is, of course, one of our big things that we talk about. And, you know, they, I'm not going to say towns, but a town that's very close to us on the other side of Palatine Road, down a piece. You know, they talk about that they have 60 and how they're swamped, and I'm like, oh my God, we would die to have 60, you know? Yeah.
60 every week?
Yeah. Yeah, sometimes it's really bad, and sometimes you feel like a nut. That's it.
Well, thanks for the job you do. Move on to committee reports. Transportation and Road Improvements, trustee Mills.
Transportation and Road Improvement Committee will meet here next Monday evening, November 13th, and beginning at 7:00 PM right here in this, in the boardroom. After approval of the minutes of our last meeting, there's only one item, request acceptance of Transportation Division Monthly Report. Then if the president wishes to give a report, we'll have that. Anything else, items in review, and then adjourn.
Thank you. Planning, Building, and Zoning, trustee Stanton.
Thank you. Immediately following Transportation and Road Improvement Committee, we'll have a roll call, reestablish a quorum, approval of the minutes for October 9th, 2017, and that'll lead us into new business when we have five items. Request by AT&amp;T for approval of an extension to an existing cellular antenna license at 1355 Westbury Drive. Two is request approval for staff to proceed with negotiations for a design-build contract with Quantum Science for design and construction of two gateway signs in the 5990 Entertainment District. Three, four, and five deal with monthly reports of the Department of Development Services. First is for Planning Division, the second is for Code Enforcement Division, and the third is the Economic Development and Tourism. If the president wishes to say anything further, he'll have that opportunity, and we have nothing in other or items in review at this time, and then we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, trustee Stanton. The General Administration Personnel, trustee Arnett.
Thank you. Immediately following the Planning, Building, and Zoning Committee, we will have the General Mission and Personnel Committee for November 13th. We will do a roll call first, and the approval of minutes for September 11th, 2017. We have four new business items. Number one would be discuss regarding, discussion regarding redesign of Village website. Two would be request acceptance of cable TV monthly report. Three would be request acceptance of Human Resources Management Monthly Report. And four would be request acceptance of Legislative Operations and Outreach Monthly Report. Then we would go into president's report if he has any. If there's anything in other or items in review, then we would call for an adjournment.
Thank you, trustee Arnett. Move on to seven. Planning and Zoning Commission Reports. Chairperson Combs, how are you?
I'm fine. It's not nine o'clock yet.
Not nine o'clock yet. Do you want to sit down till nine o'clock?
Sure.
If you want to move the clock ahead, it is almost nine.
That's true. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for approval a request by Charles and Barbara Barrett for a 15-foot corner side yard setback variation from Section 9-3-3-C-2 to allow a 6-foot-high solid fence to be 0 feet from the southern property line instead of the minimum required 15 feet at 1230 Hunter's Ridge West. There are 7As for absent. Motion carried.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? Trustee Mills.
Just a question, and I see it came up as one of the commissioners asked it, too. Why is the front portion going to be wood and the rest of it PVC?
He has to do the topography, right?
Just to interface off for the record, sir.
My name is Charles Barrett. I'm the property owner, 1230 Hunter's Ridge West. Actually, because of the slope of the landscaping, the fence company said that, you know, we're going to do PVC fence on the side, and the fence company says that they would have to distort or stretch the PVC to make it follow the slope of the house. So we just decided to do wood. They said, why don't we do cedar, and we'll paint it to match the PVC.
Okay. Just curious, because I saw that question there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? See none? Can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Any other questions? Does no further questions? Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Move on to nine, adjournment to executive session for what reasons? Trustee Mills?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn into executive session for the purpose of litigation. Five, ILCS 120 slash 2C 11.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion on this? See no discussion? Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Move on to nine, adjournment to executive session for what reasons? Trustee Mills?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn into executive session for the purpose of litigation. Five, ILCS 120 slash 2C 11.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion on this? See no discussion? Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried.